I haven't heard say we're recording, that's why.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Could we rise for the pledge please this morning? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Our first order of business is the elected officials swearing in.
I see two, Hillary and Kevin Sturgeon. You guys want to come up here? Just raise your right hand. Upon your taking this oath of office and having this appointment and certificate of said oath recorded by the town, or you shall have the powers to perform the duties as your elected department official for the town of Belmont. As of March 12, 2024, do you, Hillary Corn and Kevin Sturgeon solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulation of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire so help you God.
I do.
I see you guys decided your oaths. Oh geez. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to work with you.
I actually, but I had surgery on my hands, so I can't.
And then you, you actually have.
I got two.
Yeah, because you by default got elected to the budget committee.
The initial invite for the elected officials to come in, it was 10:30, so if you may have people who didn't per R S V P that might struggle at 10:30, it doesn't need to be in the meeting, so if.
Jim may have to, she's just gonna go out in the hallway? Okay, alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business is the organization of the Board of Selectmen and committee assignments. Travis, any?
What?
Any ideas? What would you like?
Committee?
Pardon?
For committee assignments?
Nope, for the, how we're organizing the board. We need to elect a chairman.
Travis didn't say.
And a vice chair.
I mean.
Thoughts?
Not much.
Okay.
I, I have no issue helping out with leadership if that's needed.
Alright, okay. John?
If that's up to the board.
I'd nominate you for chairman.
Me?
Yep.
Okay. Sunny?
Yes.
Yes, what? Do you have someone else that you would like to nominate for chairman?
Uh, no, I'm gonna stay neutral on this one.
Alright, Sharon?
What is neutral?
I mean, I don't.
I mean, he has no one else, I guess, that he's.
Okay. No, the nomination on the floor is fine.
Alright, do we have a second?
You made the motion.
Would someone like to second that?
I will second that.
Alright, alright. All in favor? Alright. Vice Chair?
I have a suggestion for that if.
Alright.
Chair. I would nominate Travis to be Vice Chair.
Okay. Sunny?
Yeah, Travis.
Alright. John?
Travis.
Alright. I'll second it then. Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Committee assignments. Do I have a list of those?
Those are the fun ones.
Those are the fun ones. Okay. Our first one is Planning Board Rep. Obviously, I would, I would, if John is willing to stay on the Planning Board, I would actually elect him. I don't think you have to elect though, this is just, are you willing?
What is clarification?
What's that?
I believe that the Planning Board position runs concomitant with that person's term.
Oh, that's right. We ran into that once before. You are right.
Clarification, so John.
Is. Yeah, that's, I forgot about that.
It wouldn't be a new plan each time a board changes?
No, well, I would. But how would that, what would happen if, say, he was up for election?
Then.
Oh, then it would be, then it would be a new member. That's right. Yeah, it does run with his term. So like next year, if he's up for reelection, you would have to then, if he was reelected, reelect him to the board or not. We, we ran into that a year or so ago. I, I almost think it was last year, wasn't it, or a couple of years ago?
I'd say, because last year we were appointed to the Planning Board and it was in the middle of his term, so that's what threw me off.
Alright, just, I'll nominate him to be, to continue on the Planning Board. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Budget Committee Rep. I'm willing to serve on it again unless someone else would like to do that. Anyone else wants to do that? Is everyone in favor?
Yeah, but there's the add to, I'd like to shadow you on it.
Yeah, it's all, well, it's open to the.
Yeah, but like, go, like, see what you do.
Yeah. Alright, okay. Heritage Commission, was that, that was you?
That was you.
That's me.
Would you like?
I need a motion.
Oh, for the budget, sorry. Would someone like to make that motion for the budget?
Keep the motion.
Alright, someone second it?
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Heritage Commission?
I was on it, I didn't attend many of them, but.
Yeah, but then we, then we, you backed down, right? And then we did Sharon.
Yep.
Would you like to stay on that, Sharon?
Well, you want to stay on Conservation, I'll take Heritage.
I, well, so.
It's alright, I just didn't have her on it.
I know, but. I, I know, so here's the main thing, I really like being on the Heritage Commission, but I kind of think that I should go with Conservation and I'm too busy to do both. So if Travis would like to do the Heritage.
Heritage, yeah.
Heritage? Alright, I'll nominate Travis to be on the Heritage Commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll nominate Sharon to be on the Conservation.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can't wait to make sure he's not.
And then I just have one suggestion. There was an article that appeared in the paper last week. It said Alton and Belmont Solar Panel, whatever, and I started getting calls from people, because I, I didn't even read the article, but evidently how it was written, people took it that, that the town was putting up a solar field, which was incorrect. My thought was, would it behoove us to have someone sit in the ARC meeting from the board? I'm, there was one other, one other thing that happened and I didn't know, but it went to the ARC and then there's a certain period of time, I guess, before it goes to planning, there's a, is there a?
There's no definitive timeline, it just depends on the applicant. They could come to ARC and wait six months, but we've had them come to ARC and then the next month go to planning.
Okay, alright. And I guess, is there, you know, is there something illegal with a select board member sitting and just being present for that meeting? I wouldn't think so, is there?
It's, it's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting.
It's an advisory committee.
Alright. Is there someone here that would be, it's once a month?
Once a month.
If nee, if needed.
Yeah, 8:00 AM.
Okay, on a Thursday. That leaves you up. Well, that's what you do, alright. Would someone like to, maybe?
8:00 AM, I can't.
You can't.
That, just as, just as a piece of information, if it's easier and there's not a member that can attend, what we can do is, if you would like us to, is we hate, they're not, they're notes, not minutes, but we can certainly send ARC notes so that you're aware of what's going on.
To the board members?
If that's something that is more amenable as far as scheduling, because it is Thursday at 8:00 AM.
Yep. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's just kind of, you know, right. You know, I had a couple of people say, oh, you guys are building a solar field, and I went, I didn't know about that. So, you know, you kind of cover yourself. Alright, okay. That would be, I think, helpful. Alright. Question on meeting schedule. Are we going to keep our Wednesday morning meetings at this point unless we are asked by one of our department heads or a group or committee to meet in the evening? How do we feel about that?
I, I would still like to do evening meetings if we could, but.
Yeah.
Obviously up to the board.
Alright.
Following what the vote is just for, and I don't want us to spend any money, the evening meetings cost us money.
Okay.
And how only saw we people here right now and we're not paying a time and a half.
Overtime or something?
Or overtime over, for the night meeting.
Alright.
I, I saw the date.
Are our department heads, so.
Quiet, please. This, we will ask for public comment at the end.
Our department head's non-union, so can't we ask them to come in later since they're non-union?
I, I missed that.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, I missed that.
Just to point out a fact, you have one, two, three, four, five or six employees here at this meeting who are not, who are not salaried, who.
We would have to pay overtime.
Be having to pay overtime.
Right, alright, okay.
Yeah, but I was trying to say is, if they're non-union, can't we ask them to come in later so we don't create overtime? Since they're non-union? Government of the town, so.
Well, the only problem is, you know, obviously, the town hall has hours and then are we gonna change hours that the town hall is open to accommodate people at night? No.
And then if you even, even if you use that rationale, would say your department heads, you know, how effective is that for them to, say, come in at 10:00 and not run their department or the business so that they can accommodate a night meeting? I'm just giving you that. The full size of the story, that there is a financial.
There's a financial gain to having daytime meetings.
Yes.
Okay. Sunny, your feeling?
I, I'd still like to keep them on days myself. I think if, we'd get a better turnout with people. Look at the people here now. So, good night times. It's different. So I, I want to stay days.
Sharon?
I think we should move them to nighttime. People are always saying they would come if they were at night. The more people would attend, and I think that we should at least try it to see, you know, and if it doesn't work, then we can go back to it. As far as employees go, I mean, if they don't have business before the board on our agenda, then they don't necessarily need to be here that we pay them overtime. That's just my thought.
After the candidate's night, there were several people that I talked with and two, three school people and whatever, and they, because I, I think someone had mentioned maybe going to night meetings, and they indicated to me that they understood, and now because we're going to, what are, who, how's our meetings gonna be recorded? YouTube? Yeah, and they felt, and, and they were, because I guess that's how the school, and they find it very, it works better, okay, than our meetings, however we were doing it before. So I, at this point, unless someone has a, you know, like the library, we always met, meet at night for the library, alright, because they all work out of town, so we do do that. I, at this point, would feel I would prefer to stay with morning meetings. But again, we're open, if there's a group or the library or whatever that feels that they need a meeting, that we can meet at night and kind of just leave it open at this point.
And I will add, if that helps or it doesn't help, I have never once gotten a request from anyone from the public, because it doesn't count, to have a night meeting. And if we did, it was the library or a committee that.
Or a group that.
Group, and we accommodated those appropriately.
Okay, alright. Do we need a motion for that, or do we?
Sharon.
Alright. John, would you like to make?
I'll make a motion, keep the meetings starting today.
Okay.
You got open up a public comment?
At the end, we have public at the end. Public comment at the end.
Oh.
Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. And vote being?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
No? Okay. That passes. Okay, we have a public hearing.
They're saying on Wednesday, so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We can do the minutes first?
Pardon?
Minutes first?
Can the public please quiet down?
Yeah, thank you.
Can't hear the board.
Alright. We have minutes of the Board of Selectmen's meeting held on March 6th. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move on.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you, Sharon, for reminding. All of a sudden, I saw the town clock.
I just wanted to be able to do it just once.
Oh, a check, got it. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings that we need to move into. Our first one is a public hearing in accordance with RSA 31,95-B to accept a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the Library's Transforming Communities LTC, Accessible Small and Rural Communities Grant. I'd love to, how are you this morning? Fire away.
Sure. So, I'm, I'm Ian Gilbert, I'm the library director. This is the second year that we received this grant. Last year, the $10,000 paid for a new accessibility device for the front door of the library and also some furniture that accommodates wheelchair access. So, that was last year's grant. The interesting thing about this grant is that the, there is a public participation requirement before we choose the project that it is going for. So, I've been preparing a couple of options for, before the public, to make the library buildings or building or collections or programs more accessible. But we put those options before the public and they decide which one is most helpful to the largest number of the community.
Interesting. Hmm. So you, do you do that right there at the library for people that come in, or you put it out to?
We put it out on our social media.
Yeah.
And we have a paper survey.
Right.
And we'll have at least one in-person meeting.
Okay. Interesting. Any? No? Is there anyone in the public would like to speak on this grant? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing. I'll need a motion for this.
A motion to accept in accordance with RSA 3195-B to accept a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the Library Transforming Communities Accessibility Small and Rural Communities Grant. Grant funds will be used to make the library more accessible based on community input.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you. Our, our next public hearing is in accordance with RSA 289,19-21 to declare seven Belmont cemeteries as abandoned. Do you, oh, okay, Kyle? Oh, Hillary. You're coming at us.
How are you?
Good morning, good. Okay, fire away.
So, back in December, January, we put an ad in paper to have seven of our cemeteries declared abandoned so that they can be consumed by the town of Belmont, since we maintain most of them. I think we've maintained six out of the seven. This is to make it so that we can, you know, when property changes hands, there's more confusion as to who sent that, who owns the property. As far as I know, we didn't receive any letters from anybody questioning or any descendants that were claiming these cemeteries, so, and we spent $242 to the ad in two different newspapers to reach out to these individuals. And since we didn't hear anything, it would just make sense to declare them abandoned and to have the town of Belmont take possession.
Any questions?
So, I did talk to Chick Smith. He has the property at Levitt Road. And he said that it was a very good idea, since we've been mowing it for the last 30 years, if we actually owned it. And he didn't have any descendants in it, so.
How much is this one increase or budget, budget to take over these cemeteries?
Just the $250,000, they've already.
No, no, I mean, to maintain the cemeteries, did you put that in? Are you gonna maintain these cemeteries?
So far, they're already being maintained except for one of them.
Which one? That was my question.
Waymouth on Brown Hill, it's, yeah, Waymouth on Brown Hill Road, which is the one out in the woods. It probably will, but it should not enter into the budget. It's not going to be this year and probably not next year either, so it'll probably be two years out.
Any other questions?
I mean, the amount that it'll cost for that one cemetery will depend on whoever has the maintenance contract at the time.
Sure.
For our logic, that's.
Sure. Alright, okay. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this public hearing? Hearing none?
Comment?
Comment, that's a comment.
So, I'd like to step out as an employee and speak as a resident.
Okay.
Calling after me, one hundred and seventy promise road. I think this is an important thing for the board to do because it is going to provide protection for the memorial sites or grave sites that are already being taken care of by the town, because there are no descendants, obviously, that capable to take care of these. It, it's not the same, but I have a very large pet cemetery on my property and I worry about what happens when we're not here anymore and somebody comes along and they want to plant a garden or whatever, and they're just gonna mow into this burial ground of my pets, which again is not the same, but I just, I would hate to be a person that 50 years down the road, if they're not marked, if they're not noted, if they're not given back in law numbers, somebody could try to build a garden and dig into ground.
Just go through it with an excavator.
Right, I mean, if they have building permits, somebody here at the town hall could, you know, say such and such, but if they're just doing work around their yard, they're not necessarily gonna know. It also gives the board some teeth to be in the butter as the owner of those parcels to anything that is done on the surrounding property. So, the, the board has not. It, it just gives more protections for the board to be able to protect those sites.
Right. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close this public hearing. Do I have a motion for that?
A motion to declare the following cemeteries banned at RSA 289, 1921, Gale Cemetery, Woodman Cemetery, Levitt Cemetery, Farah Cemetery, Prescott Cemetery, Waymouth Cemetery, and Swallow Cemetery. I think that's all the right ones.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stay in. Okay, our next order of business is town meeting update. Thank, thank you, guys. Sorry. Too many things in front of me. Okay?
I can second.
Go ahead.
So, it kind of mashed together, so we all kind of did make this one big, as we all know, the operating budget failed, and so we are now in a default budget. We also had a number of war, separate warrant articles for capital reserves that also failed, so those will not be moving forward as planned. All of our zoning amendments passed as just re-ariteration. We had two of our union employee contracts that passed, with one failing. The water sewer departments, their budgets passed, those are again funded for user fees. It's kind of the overview really of the warrant articles that passed and failed. So at this point in time, we move forward with what does life look like now for all of us and the town operating in a default budget? Which obviously, the budget that we put forward, that the budget committee put forward, was a budget that we all knew we needed to work within to run the town. So it's back to the drawing board for myself, yourself, and the department heads. And I and the department heads will be looking for direction from you as to how you want me and the department heads to move forward with relooking at our budgets. There's obviously things that are in our budgets that we simply cannot cut because they're contractual but not contractual to the point where they're allowed to be in the default. There are more service contracts that we don't have a signed contract for that we're obligated to, but they're, it's a service contract that we still have, we still need. Just even, even if PD has probably 10 service contracts to run different programs that he needs to still fund. Those increased, we have no control over service contracts and those increases, but we still have to meet those needs. I have started the process, knowing that it's obviously the inevitable next step of meeting with some of the department heads to say, okay, give me what you can't cut, give me what you want to preserve. So we've started that process. I mean, it took months and months to build, build the budget. To redo the budget is not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take a lot of work seeing where we can cut. It's gonna hurt the town overall, it's, things will have to be cut, there's just no, no going around that. But as the board and your authority of managing the affairs of the towns and the RSA that gives you that authority, now that the town voters, now that the voters gave us the budget, their opinion or, not really their opinion, but their interaction with our budget goes away. They said, here's a pot of money, you do what you need to now to make it work. So now it's the board, that's your job to make it work, and then your dictation to us. I don't expect, you know, it's only been a week, that you guys have any direction. I'm happy, and I think probably next week we'll have to have a.
Work session?
Work sessions with the board, I mean, with the board and the department heads. And I'm gonna give you some suggestions they are, as well as you guys will give us direction. What's important to you guys to save, what's okay with you guys to cut, and how we can afford to cut.
So, quick question. So, when it comes to service contracts, for example, just for the PD, if it's an emergency service like that, why, is there a way we can get a signed contract so it does fall into default if this ever happens again?
Well, I'd, if it's a service contract, let's just say, I don't know, say he's got a service contract for his radios, just for instance, that's not, that we can't, even though it's part of the budget, it's added to that figure, correct? Because it's a service contract. So it's, so let's just say the, the, the budget is 10 million and the service contract is 500,000, does that mean that it becomes 10,500,000 because it's a s- signed contract?
So your default would include those contractual obligations that by law I have to, like employee health insurance, the Cosella contract, I've entered into that contract with Cosella for five years, I'm obligated to pay that. So that can go into the default, would that increase that it is year after year?
It's to protect us from bankruptcy, that's the point.
Right, right, right.
If it's a contract that we obviously need every year.
Exactly.
I don't know if there's a way we could get a signed one.
They may not fall into the, the letter of the law as far as a contract that is, that the town has, you know, has to obligate.
So if the, if, and again, whether it's the fire or the police department, they need radios, they need communication to do their jobs, and there's a contract to do all, and I don't know if there is, I'm just using the, isn't that above and beyond the default? No?
Those will be, yes, if. You're, they're just gonna have to find it in their budget to cut to, to make a foot-up difference.
Okay.
Yeah, I was predicting for future matters if it's ever happening again.
Yeah.
We're trying to attack that settlement.
Yeah, I see, I see. Yeah, I see, I see what you're... Well, I think obviously our, I would think our first direction is we need to keep our employees whole.
Now, most of these departments have capital reserves, am I right? So, why, you, can you tap into that even though you got, you can't?
No, the capital reserves are for specific purposes, so, you know, we have a capital reserve for a bridge. You can only use that to maintain and repair and build a bridge. We have them for the roads, which unfortunately got voted down. Um, so that's for repair, maintain, build roads. Um, we have one for information technology. Um, yeah, you could probably, you know, use some of that money for other projects within the year. But we don't have any capital reserve that is for wages, or we don't have a capital reserve that is a contingency fund, which is an option that the board may wanna look at in the future, is creating a capital reserve contingency fund for items like this that happen in the future.
Isn't contingency in the fund balance the same thing, though?
No, you have to, in my understanding of speaking with RA, DRA, you have to still go to town meetings to get access.
Oh, you mean a line on the, on the budget contingency line?
And an emergency to DRA is town hall breaking down. Not, they do not consider wages an emergency. So, you're saying wages is your, is your...
That's what I'm concerned about, I mean, let's face it. Um, you know, uh, we have town employees.
Yeah, we, we, we assigned some contracts last year, which are three-year contracts with the unions.
Right, they would go back to that, right? But not the, not the increases that we proposed by opening the contract, the police would not get that.
Yeah, just the other two that got accepted would go through, and then, well, a non-union, yeah, a non-union is already back there.
Right, and all, uh, non-union employees do not get a raise.
Correct, so it would be...
Unless we cut, unless we cut.
Yeah, unless it's non-union, so your non-union staff and your police, your fire, your DPW, all employees in town hall, your library, your parks and rec, your building grounds, everyone, those were not included in the default. So, um, if that was an important, an importance of the board to maintain those proposed wages, then that would be a charge for us to find a way to, um, have to accommodate that. I will say, we can't run a town without people, so, um...
No, I took the words out of my mouth.
Our goal, and, you know, as I said in my article in the newspaper, our goal with in, the increases in the budget was wages to keep and retain employees and also attract employees. It's not so much a matter of loyalty anymore, it's survival. I mean, towns are, towns in the state and the counties are all willing to pay ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars more to employees. And why would someone stay when they can, when they need that to survive as well?
Yeah, the hard part is you have to also balance our services to the town as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, and we can't do that if we don't have people.
I know, that's the hard part, balancing it all out.
And, and you need people to create revenue, I need, I need the town clerk's office open to accept motor vehicle funds that offset our taxes that are...
What was our revenues that we, and, what, what was our rev- revenue? Do you know, John, what our revenue, just a round figure?
One point six.
Okay. Million?
Yes.
Sure. And that will be, if our office isn't open and it's not functioning, we could lose those monies. And, and planning the same way there, with all the building permits and all the permits, that's all revenue that we could lose if the office isn't open. I guess, my two cents is we need to start with our employees.
Is there any other concerns or wants or wishes or direction that I and the department head should be gearing our, our thought process to?
Well, and obviously start figuring out where we're gonna cut. I have some questions for you. Um, aren't you, are, isn't the town due for an audit in April?
The June, the town does an audit every year.
But it's supposed to start in April, right?
Um, it can start anywhere after April, ours is slated for June right now.
Okay.
Because we do not have, um, sufficient staff, we had to put it off.
Okay. Any thoughts on having a consultant come in with experience with this? Since that, I don't, would none of us have ever dealt with a default budget before?
Considering a consultant is three or four times more than employee, now that I don't have that in my budget, I don't know where I'm gonna find the money to hire an outside consultant.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is like starting a budget over again, just you have the, the bottom figure that you have to work with now.
We're being told what we have to work with.
I have reached out for help, um... Our, our helpline list was a little too much for someone, so they weren't able to help us. But, yeah, consultants are out there at seventy-five to a hundred dollars an hour, um, easily. But again, I have a default now that that was not approved in last year's budget, so.
I mean, I think for the department heads, when it comes to wages, we have to just strictly target more, no offense to any of our higher-ups and department heads, uh, target more onto the lower end of our scale and where we actually have to, where we know we are underpaying and we have to try and make those a little more appetizing to stay or bring them in, but unfortunately, we have to work with what we have this year.
And obviously, department heads, I think, are all here. It's gonna be a case, unfortunately, that, um, you gotta get skinny, you gotta find, um... And unfortunately, we're gonna have to eliminate some things that people probably don't want eliminated, but I don't think we have a choice. This is a town-wide issue, so it affects every department, I would say, in the town. And, uh, obviously, Alicia's gonna need all the help she can get, but we're gonna have to make some tough choices in the next month or so, few weeks, whatever. Alright. Any other questions, guys, at this point? No? Karen, no?
No.
No, okay.
Um, the second part of that, the wait just in approval, this is just housekeeping. Um, this is, you have, that you guys just need to sign off on for me, that I can give Steve to input for April first, is, um, the two union contracts that did pass, so those, um, the approval from you guys of those. And then for the PD, um, they would revert to the prior contract rating period, so that's all that item is. And that's just the housekeeping item for you guys to sign, and those, um, we just, are effective until August. And Jen, I did see that we had some budget committee members that came in at the ten-thirty, so if you want to, if it's okay with the chair, so just help her do those scoring in.
Yep, yes, sure.
Thank you.
Don and Mark, correct? Thank you for coming, come on up. If you would just raise your right hands. Upon your taking this oath of office and having this appointment and certificate of said oath recorded by the town clerk, you shall help the powers perform the duties as budget committee members for the town of Belmont. As of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, do you, Mark Zimmerman and Donald Hurd, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as budget committee members according to the best preparabilities agreeably to the rules and regulation of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. Oh, congratulations, congratulations, I just need to get your seat first. Um, this is Mark's, and that is yours, and you have a pen. There we go. Nope, sorry. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, congratulations, guys. Okay, um, oh, yeah, okay. Um, Belmont twenty twenty-three equalization ratio update.
Yep, just one more, so, the MS two thirty...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we hit that.
Nope, that's okay.
Alright.
So, this is just another housekeeping, so after town meeting, I go into the portal at DRA and, and basically upload all of the, um, the budget items, whether they pass or fail in any amount. And that's probably MS two thirty-two, so that just shows, you know, all of our appropriations, and that includes all the other warrant articles that, um, that, or that passed. So, this is a sit-down you're operating, and then you guys just sign on that.
Thank you. Okay, now the Belmont twenty twenty-three equalization ratio update.
Yes, in your files, you have the ledger from the Department of Revenue. So, our twenty twenty-three equalization ratio is eighty-eight point five. Basically, what this means is that we are still below market value as far as our evaluation. People, all towns' goal is to be at a hundred percent equalization, you're at eighty-eight point five, twenty-three.
So, we don't have to take any action on this?
Nope, just FYI, it's just plain information too, but that's where we're at.
So, as much as we've increased, we're not there yet. Okay. Um, L-Chip incentive payment.
Um, this is a yearly, um, L-Chip award that the Conservation Commission receives, right?
Yes.
Conservation, yeah.
Um, it is for the Curious Amborn Property, which was purchased with L-Chip funds, annual, we have to walk it, and when we provide the report, we receive the incentive payment.
Oh, nice, okay, so this is just to accept that payment?
Yep, there is a motion on any business on the flip side of there.
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the L-Chip funds in the amount of five hundred dollars for the annual, um, but this is five hundred, but here it says five fifty.
Yeah, I just saw that too.
What's, is it five fifty or five hundred?
Oh, I don't have it with me.
Uh, go with the letter, go with the letter.
The letters, it's five fifty.
Okay. Alright, okay, let me start over again. A motion to accept the L-Chip funds in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars for the annual reporting for the Sam, uh, Curious Amborn Conservation Area. Funds then to be deposited into the Conservation Commission Fund. Could I have a second for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Community hazard, hazard mitigation plan update.
So, this is a renewal, we had done this, um, I think this is a five-year, uh, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have to update our hazard mitigation plan, um, and we get grant funding for that. The grant is in the amount of nine thousand dollars, where the match on the town of three thousand. Um, and the fire chief has said that she has that in her budget to cover that match. Um, you just have to, um, very specifically read the motion I gave you for the grant documents. This hazard mitigation plan will, it's kind of tiresome and, um, kind of consuming, but it, it involves the department, it involves Craig and police and fire, myself, doing, um, weekly or monthly meetings and updating our plan in the event we have a hazard. And I know Deb is not here, but...
I was just gonna say, Deb's...
Ron is here and Fire Chief, uh, police chief, would ask you to also speak to it if anyone has any questions about it.
What kind of, what is this, what is a?
Could be hurricane, tornado, earthquake.
Alright.
Cyber.
Cyber, yeah, cyber.
Okay.
Basically saying, there's a hurricane, what is your plan, where do you use your traps, like, who's involved? Um, the school, I think, is also...
Parts and locations, food, shelters.
Okay.
Heating.
Alright, okay, alright, that's, alright. Um, any other questions? No? Um, does someone wanna read that motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the, the terms of the building resilient infrastructure in communities as presented in the amount of nine thousand dollars for the updating of local hazard ma- mitigation plan. Furthermore, the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be twelve thousand dollars, in which the town will be responsible for twenty-five percent match, three thousand dollars.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, beautify Belmont.
Yes, for the last five or six years or so, we started doing the beautify Belmont, I'm sorry, it went on my date, um, where we partnered up with Earth Day, and this year, I believe, Earth Day is April twenty-second.
April twenty-second.
So, we usually plan to do that beautify Belmont the weekend of the twentieth, twenty-first, and then on the twenty-second, uh, DPW comes and picks up the blue bags. So, if we would like to proceed with that again this year, it, we still have plenty of blue bags that we get free from the program that started this, um, leftover from last year, I believe, and I heard that's right, and he said they're happy to go and pick up everything on the twenty-second. After your approval, I usually reach out to the schools and say, hey, we're doing this, if you guys have any, you know, um, wanna get the kids together to, to also participate and, you know, maybe the, the high schoolers need some community service.
Community talent, mm-hmm.
And this just kinda helps to pick up all the, the roadside trash that accumulates over the winter time and before the, this, the grass was...
Alright.
Ruth?
Yes.
We've been, uh, Legion's been working with the school, uh...
Yes.
For beautification.
Yep.
And we've got a day set aside this spring that, uh, the seniors are gonna do a community service day. So, if we wanna coordinate that, um, Dr. Patrick, and Pennstock Park and some of these other things that we, uh, uh, Matt at the high school was pretty enthusiastic about that. So, we're trying to work up a program to do the same thing, so we can coordinate all that.
Yep, alright.
Yeah, I'll say it looked good last year, seeing the high schoolers come around with the blue bags and pick up all through the village and stuff.
Yep.
So...
So, are you trying to do it, are you trying to do it on the same?
Well, it was gonna be in, in May, but it, it was too close to Memorial Bank, so we, we're gonna do it sometime in May, but if we wanna coordinate that...
With this, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll plan to the high school.
Because, obviously, the snow, I think in years past, it was later because there were snowbanks and stuff, so at least there's, there's no snowbanks. And it's nice to get out there before the ticks get really, really bad.
And then, getting the work, uh, holder of the school is wanting to come down and do some community service stuff, so, uh, we're trying to coordinate that.
Make that. Awesome, good, alright, alright.
We've also done a sign-up, so people can either go to DPW to get the bags, or library or town hall, usually to the sheet, and people will come out, but that they're gonna clean up.
Oh, certain...
That they live on, so then Craig kinda has an idea where he's gonna go and pick up the bags on that Monday.
Okay.
That helps.
Alright.
So, we'll coordinate it.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Um, any other new business?
Hmm, no.
Yes?
That would be other old.
That's the other old.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to old. Um, for Leisure Lane op- auction update.
Yes, we held that auction on March second, and it went as well as I figured it would. We, uh, property auctioned off at sixty-two thousand five hundred, um, which will go right into our revenue fund. Um, I knew we were going to be auctioning that off this year, so I already pre-planned that in our revenue, I accounted for that already. So, it, it covered our expenses of doing the demo and the abatement on the property. It did not fully cover all the taxes that were owed to the town, but it did a good dent, so.
Awesome.
And now that will, um, put that property, I assume someone's gonna put a new building on that and get that onto the tax roll.
Good.
That was just an informative question, I know the answer, but doesn't that sale of that land impact the value of the land around it now? So, people should understand that land, that their land is worth that much money now?
I would think so.
It's already worth a lot.
That's what I'm saying, like, the land around that property, everyone should understand, their, just their land alone is worth sixty-two thousand dollars roughly now.
Yeah.
And how big is it? It was...
Quarter acre.
Quarter acre.
Was it a quarter acre?
So, down, down, down the record.
We had, um, ten people actual bid, and then it was between two... Ten people actual bid and then it was between two people. As we got going, so, and Sharon was there and some staff wanted to go see what an auction was like, so we had a field trip and, uh, it's fun, it's kind of interesting to see where it goes. And all the neighbors came out and, and watched and were curious and stuff.
Yeah, I was like, wow. Oh, so they already know. Yeah, yeah, they know. If they were present, they know.
Yeah, there was about twelve or twelve, fifteen of them.
Oh, they all know.
Yeah, they were just, I think they were very happy.
Um, before April first, so the next, the next, um, tax bill, that, the value of that property and any improvements it goes to the new owner, so it'll be gaining revenue real.
Good, awesome, okay. Is that COSAP?
COSAP.
COSAP? C-O-S-S-A-P Grant Amendment, One-Year Extension.
You wanna talk to this? I have the agreement.
Yeah, the agreement, yeah.
Um, as you know, um, the police department, the police department were approved for the COSAP grant, um, that is a part-time employee that we have that does. What did you?
You mean rich?
Yes.
Oh, the drug, is that the drug, oh, the drug.
Drug prevention.
Okay, got it.
The drug prevention.
Yes.
Educator.
Yes, mediator.
Mediator, um, so that was to expire September of twenty-four and we have gotten an approval that they are going to extend that till September of twenty-twenty-five.
So, d- will that happen every year?
I think that program's gonna continue to roll over. I don't really see it ending.
But they only do it for one year at a time? Yeah.
So the problem's growing, I think program's gonna grow and I think you'll see more participants. But the police agencies have less employees now.
Yeah.
That can partake in this. So I think of the five they had, three have backed out now and there's only two that are active, or one.
Oh, wow.
Is this like?
There are many more issues.
And probably what happened is the feds were given a bucket of money to run this program and like Chief said, those people either backed out because they didn't have employees or they have extra money, so the feds don't wanna, they have to use it. So they, they don't wanna redistribute it back into, so they just extended it is what my assumption is because they had unused funds. And come next year, if they still had more funds that were extended, they may offer up to do another extension.
Question for the chief real quick, is this like an updated version of there, kinda?
No.
No? Okay.
In, in this situation, actually, he's interacting with the homeless and drug addicted. They're also called out on drug overdoses. They interact, those individuals, to try to get them into programs, get them into shelters and it's, it's a hands-on, it's a hands-on thing, there's no set time. Richie could be working today, right now, take the rest of the afternoon off, come back out tonight. It, he takes them to, uh, Suboxin clinics, he takes them to appointments that they can't get to because they don't have transportation. And it's all trying to gear those individuals to get away from the drugs.
That'd be helpful, please.
Of course. It's, it's a definitely a hands-on, in the camp and.
Thank you.
And I think they also help educate the family members of those who are addicted to.
To try to help those people through that and give them the guidance and the direction that they need to try to get that person there. But as you know, as anyone knows, if those individuals aren't ready yet, they're not ready. But at least it's a step in the right direction and something that at least Belmont's doing its best.
Pot.
To go after the ones, the, the people that live here and have grown up here that are gifted to, to something, to try to get them on, to get them on a better path.
And I think part of this too is, we didn't, weren't able to hire somebody for that position right from when the grant was awarded to us. And I think that's why it's extended, because the time we put somebody in the position to.
So time had passed, yeah.
To, to, quite, quite a distance, yeah.
Yes, but this position also has been instrumental in my office.
Yeah.
Saving, um, a fair amount of money in services. Seriously, it has. And this position costs zero to the town, just so everybody knows. I mean, I, I mean, that, I believe the grant provided for a vehicle, a computer. It provided all wages, benefits, you name it. So this has been, um, some of the lifesaver for me in some of these other areas that everyone points me this to the town and I can certainly, um, take advantage of, utilize and so that it allows me, um.
Awesome, okay. Huge, good. So we need a motion, um.
Yes.
All right. Does someone like to make that motion? I'll make the motion, motion to approve the COSAP? I'm gonna say it wrong anyway. Grant for the Police Department Amendment for a one-year extension. Grant completion date of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
BBO mowing update, Patrick.
Yes, at our last meeting, um, our building and ground supervisor, um, had come to you guys because they were approached by the, um, baseball organization about the possibility of them mowing their field that they use. Um, we had some discussion here and then I reached out to Superintendent Tursey, who I do see sat in the back over there, um, in, in regards to the Belmont organization in the field up there. And he said, no, no, that's our field, our property, um, send them my way. So I relayed the message to Patrick to let the BBO contact the school as, you know, as he was right in saying, that's their property. Um, and I don't know if a conversation has taken place or not with them, but I sent them to the school.
Okay. And you haven't heard yet?
Coordinated the meeting.
Okay, so meeting's been coordinated, good, okay. Um, other old business.
We have three other old businesses, um, so just an update, the Volkswagen Clean Diesel Grant that the DPW Department applied for. You know that we were approved for one. Right now, it is in the next stage of getting on the agenda for the Government Council. I believe that she's, that we're gonna be on the agenda for three twenty-seven.
She's hoping.
So basically, once it gets there, we can just keep an eye on it and then they encourage our Belmont county reps to advocate for us.
Stop looking at me.
You notice how everybody?
And, um, to basically, um, support it when it gets to, to there. And they'll let us know if there's anything else that we need to do to advocate for that.
Remind it, Joe.
I'll talk to Joe.
Um, so just advise me of that, um.
Now, would a letter help from the board?
They said a letter would help from our rep. We've already got a letter.
A rep, okay.
I'll talk to the other two.
All right, and, and obviously, with the default, we need all the help we can get.
Can you print me off something just so I can know a little bit more about it? And I'll give it to the other reps too?
Yep.
I'll swing in later tonight.
Okay.
Cause I haven't, I'll see them all tomorrow, we have session tomorrow.
Um, at our last meeting, I discussed a very sad situation in regard to the Senate Bill five-five-three that was moving through the ranks, um, in regards to the PDIP in our, in all, or not all, but most of the towns, counties, schools, yada, 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 um, savings accounts. Um, so if you don't mind, if I can just read this email, that's kind of circulating. Um, Senate Bill five-five-three has been assigned to the House Finance Committee. Um, proponents of the bill have conceded in skipping over having the bill heard in a policy committees such as Commerce, where the merits of the bill should be debated. The Finance Committee typically deals with only the monetary impact of a bill. They are trying to fast-track the bill, no surprise. I hope you will be available for the public hearing on S P five-five-three when it is scheduled. I will let you know. So NHMA, a lot of other towns are, you know, pushing for, A, our, our representatives to, to sign letters, to speak on our behalf. Um, I have heard, and I think it was maybe Travis that said, you know, maybe the governor's who could be to this, I've heard through the great governor, I'm not sure that the governor doesn't support this, but that's just something that I've heard. Um, so it does seem like, um, they're gonna push for a lot of the towns, whether it be a selectman, a town administrator, uh, managers to go to that public hearing and, and, and really voice their opinion. Uh, I'm hugely surprised that this has passed because this will have one thousand percent impact on taxpayers because this, this is how you will have to, this, uh, save taxpayers by using the interest to fund projects. Um, I use the interest that we gain to offset, I use it as revenue to offset the tax rate. You no longer have that such of a high yield interest, it is less that I can use to offset the tax rate. So there's more taxes I have to, all towns are going to, or all towns that have their money into these, these PDIPs that will have to raise their taxes by.
And again, here we are in a default. Uh, we need every cent we can get our hands on and obviously the interest from this money, um, will be gone. Yeah.
And not to burst your bubble, but probably could be overridden by the House and the Senate, even if the government views it, cause it was twenty-four, nothing out of the Senate, so that's an override right there.
Really?
So all we can do is voice our opinion and get up there and, you know, try to make it not fair.
Okay.
And then the last thing, you do have this letter in front of you. Uh, I'm gonna ask Karen come forward and address what the letter is basically stating. And this is touching on, uh, the Leslie Roberts Drive update that we.
Oh, okay.
The beach.
The beach, the beach. The beach road. That's how it's, that's how everyone knows it as, the beach road.
Right, it's the beach road.
Okay.
Um, at our last meeting, we were discussing, you know, whether it was a class five versus a limited access right-of-way. After multiple conversations with several facets of the New Hampshire State DOT, um, it is their final determination along with the information that we provided, that it is a legislative class five road. Their legal team reviewed all the documents, they, we have been receiving funding as a class five road, um, so that they have declared it a classified, which, you know, we have to kind of concur because we have been receiving the funding and we're looking back through other records. With that being said, once that final determination was made, it was posted with the weight limit as all the other roads in town. The letter you have in front of you is a request for an exemption from the posted weight limit, which the Board of Selectmen can grant. Um, they, there is a bond that we, when it was on, when we were still under the assumption at the time that it was a limited access right-of-way, with the property owner looking to access the horse point property, Leslie Roberts Drive is the only way to get there. Um, we had requested a bond in the amount of seventy-five hundred to, because there were some, there was an intent to cut, they were going to be logging on the property. Even though at the time we, we were under the impression it was a right-of-way, because we, it was under our care and control, we requested the bond. Now that it's been determined a classified road and the weight limit has been posted, we still have the bond in place. With that being said, the, the attorney for the, for the individual is requesting an exemption which the Board of Selectmen can grant. Um, we do have the seventy-five hundred, which I know Craig and I had briefly discussed. Most of the repairs would be man-hours and potentially some material if there's some ruts. Um, it is in place, it was a cash bond, we have it in scroll right now. We have their requesting an exemption to allow them to continue logging.
They already started?
They had started some of the activities. They, they were looking at a new access point. They, they still are working within the state of New Hampshire. It's a very complicated situation, but basically the horse point is landlocked. It has an access agreement, which is currently over the front portion of the Winnie Trail that goes up and along there. They are working on an agreement right now, they are kind of in a, in a holding pattern in that they're still just working out the details. There's an agreement to relocate that access point. If you're coming down Leslie Roberts, you would see the trail up on the left, a little further down, kind of between where it exists now and the trail and the railroad tracks. But they've, they've cleared it out. Um, but in, basically they're saying that their equipment is basically trapped because of the road ban. We do have the funds, it is a cash bond, um.
So at this point, if we grant this, they would be using the, the Winnie Trail for access?
Potentially. The concern, now, you're only looking at the portion to allow, to, to exempt them from the posted weight limit because we have the bond. There are other facets that we are going to be looking at, you know, kind of, we can't require it, but we can definitely advise it, especially with the public safety aspect. Um, they're going up.
People walking.
Active trail.
Right.
Logging companies, as a general rule, have signage, you know, that you'll see, like if you go by some of the boarding logging trucks or, so we would request from the, from the individual to protect the trail, whether they put mats or something down to, until they come, once they come to that agreement with the state, they would abandon that access point, which is, we're kind of hoping that will come sooner rather than later so that access over the Winnie Trail doesn't become an issue because as, as other staff members, we do have concerns with. But this request is simply for an exemption from the weight limit on the road. We kind of have to separate the two issues.
Right.
Um, and we do have the, the bond in place. And, you know, these, as part of the statute, the selectmen have, I don't wanna say have to grant the exemption, but because we have the monies to repair any potential damage to Leslie Roberts Drive.
So what if they damage the trail?
That is another nut to crack, so to speak. They would have, that's, that's another issue we're looking at because that's how do we protect that trail? Because there is potential driving over the edge of it with a skid steer.
Of course.
You know, you're gonna take the edge of it. And we're, we're obviously going to be looking at, you know, put matting or put something down.
So we can't require a bond for that?
That's what we're working on.
Okay.
This is, this is a, we kind of have to look at this one issue as, as, as a separate.
Do we technically own the Winnie Trail? I thought that was privately owned, isn't it?
It's state, uh, property and again, we have an agreement to.
We would maintain the Winnie Trail?
Maintain our section.
That's quite good to say. What do you say, Craig?
It's a mess.
I know that, but do we waive?
Well, right now, if they're gonna access on, onto Leslie Roberts Drive from their new position.
They're gonna go on the trail.
There's a cease and desist with DES, so they technically can't do that yet anyway. I mean, I wrote it, it'll be only posted for another couple of weeks, so. I don't think ho- I don't think holding them back right now is gonna do any, any, any good. But that's.
And I think my understanding is that since they did, did do the bond, we don't really.
You, you, yeah, you're kind of our.
Okay, so.
What did they say?
You want, want?
The half, it's coming alive.
But we, we still have half a problem. We haven't done anything about to protect the trail.
Correct. That's an issue that we are still working on and.
And I wouldn't grant the exception until that issue was taken care of. That's mine.
He's posted the bond for Leslie Roberts Drive and he's asking for access over Leslie Roberts with that, because we're holding the money.
Only on Leslie Roberts, but if he.
If he harms the trail, there's.
Some, somebody's gotta pay. They're gonna look at us to pay because we granted this exemption.
Well, we grant the exemption for Leslie Roberts, not technically the Wild Trail. So that, that's a whole, I see what you're saying, it's a whole separate issue, unfortunately.
It's all wrapped in one big package, but we're kind of looking at this piece of it and the trails and the, and I understand we have the same concern, we have pretty substantial, you know, we have strong concerns about public safety and the safety of just protecting the integrity of the trail.
So what if we say, what if we return the bond that we're holding and say, no, we don't want the bond until everything is, I can see lawyers, I can just, yeah.
And we have that, the ban, if, I mean, like, you, as Craig says, in a matter of a couple of weeks, it's gonna be lifted, so it's.
But even if it's lifted?
He has an access agreement to his property from the state of New Hampshire, which is, happens to be over the same property that we have the trail. That's where the conundrum is.
Okay, Brian?
But if it's lifted, we still have the seventy-five hundred dollars to protect the road.
Correct.
So my question, and this is just a question, the bond was taken under different pretenses. At the time the bond was taken, the road wasn't known to be a classified road by us.
Well, the bond was taken to protect the road regardless of its classification, basically.
So.
It's just whose care and control, who, basically who has the ultimate control.
So now that it's a classified road, would we accept a bond for normal operations from any other logger perceived during this time of year?
You, they, if they were to, if you, for example, you've got somebody on email that wants to do logging and they are willing to post a bond that you would set, they could make the same request.
Our department does not normally grant those requests.
Right, and that's.
Or anything that's not an emergency. Cause the, the, the funds can't cover the, the damage.
Right, and, and this, like I said, they, they, the state RSA does give them.
But didn't we for, but didn't, I'm sorry, didn't we for years though, I'm thinking parents' pit from the pit up to Main Street, that somebody posted a bond? that somebody posted a bond for that for years before they redid?
It's a continuous bond on those, I believe.
Is there? Okay.
Just like where, just like Waring Road when, when the agreement.
Right, right.
That pit, we don't post that, we, we post that section of road after the entrance because that was the agreement.
And they built that, they, they rebuilt.
Just like Nutter, just like this. But, but if somebody was gonna do logging on email, there's no, I could never determine a monetary amount for a bond on the road.
Sure.
Because of logging operation, you could never determine the amount of damage that could happen.
Right.
But unfortunately, we did put a monetary amount on it by, by giving them the bond.
What's that?
I said unfortunately, we did determine a monetary amount by issuing a bond for them.
Because it's Leslie Roberts Road, it's, it's five hundred feet long.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying though, in this circumstance, we do have a bond for them at this point.
But not, not to protect them during the posted road situation.
That's why you want to.
Well, we, we have discussed it with the.
We typically don't, typically would never offer a bond during this time of year, during posted.
So we kind of put ourselves in a conundrum?
No, it was, it was a little determination that it doesn't matter that you, you give, that they posted the bond for the intent to cut or because of the road ban, the RSA states that if they need to do any work and during the road bond or if they, you know, um, cut off the bond because of the intent to cut, as long as they post a bond, it covers them for any damage to the road. And that's the only reason why you ask for a bond is to, to cover the damages to roads. That's why we come up with a figure or try to, in your best estimate. You know, obviously this might be, well, I don't know how, I suppose it's part of the termination of the seventy-five hundred dollars, but.
Ron, yes?
So what, the intent that making access to that property, they're gonna put a new road in, are they gonna use the track?
No, the intent is to relocate that access point. Their current agreement that is in place with the state of New Hampshire for that thirty-six horse point property also utilizes basically the beginning portion of the trail currently. They are in, they are basically in the final stages of working out a new agreement to relocate that access to that horse point property. Still over state property, but further down Leslie Roberts Drive and abandoning that piece that would be going over the trail.
Because the question, well, what I called the draw about it is that down below, they would have to put in a bridge or a large culvert because all the water from Bad Hill and the bypass, a lot of that flows through there.
Flows right down.
And when the, uh, we have a big storm like we did last year, that a lot of times the culvert down below where the railroad tracks, uh, culvert is, it backs up and runs down, uh.
Well, as far.
And then goes, washes out Leslie Roberts Road, so.
With, with it being declared classified, we can now require an actual driveway permit. And with that driveway permit in the path, you know, just like when you were putting a driveway along the edge of any road. If there's a culvert that's required, the appropriate size culvert, that becomes part of a, a standard driveway permit.
It's gonna be substantial because of the amount of flow that goes through there. And you're gonna retention bond that you're dealing with. So my question is, as long as it, you know, if they decide that, well, it's gonna be too expensive to put that road in, that they wanna use the trail as a access to that, then we got problems because you've got pedestrians and all that. So there's a lot of things that need to take place.
That, I mean, that access over that portion of the trail is, has been a longstanding agreement to access that property? It just happens that now at this point, there's somebody that owns it, that is actively working on that property. In the past, it's been owned and that, that access point has always existed over the trail. It just happened that the house was an abandoned property. So there's been no activity other than, you know, occasionally the police will come and check it because it's an abandoned house and we all know that it's a target.
Patrick?
Just to let everybody know, and Craig knows too, that they've already brought in the material for making the bridge. There's girders, there are those planks there, there's, uh, foundation stuff is all there. They, they had it unloaded, it's on the banking, uh, they haven't put it in place, but it's all right there for them to, uh, to put the bridge across the stream.
Somebody has to decide that which will be approved.
By.
But that's it, but that's state land, right?
DES has stepped in and has a cease and desist because they need to look at it because it's going to affect.
Well, they don't have an active agreement, so right now they're waiting for that, for that access point. They need to have a signed agreement with the state of New Hampshire and as part of that, the state of New Hampshire does on the property and DES will be involved because there are weapons involved.
Yeah, and I, just for my own, is that land big enough for housing development?
They, and this is where it comes back to ARC. Hey, the, the individual had originally come to ARC, potentially proposing a ten-mot subdivision. After coming to ARC and speaking with, I, they did take their design and go out to apparently a few engineers. They have decided to pull back from that and simply develop it as a single, single home.
Okay.
The, I, I think one of the issues there, I think it was just the steep slope.
Yep.
So, I mean, there was at ARC, they had come to that and then at that point, the, the individual called and said, no, they're, they're not gonna move forward with that. They're going to just demolish the existing home and rebuild and they have filed.
All right.
Yeah, actually, we met, we met a person, uh, not Dick Safe, but doing water and line and electric. And he said that he was under the impression that his paperwork was for ten housing development there. And that's what he was up there, uh, going through.
It, we have a, a building permit application for a single.
But I'm just saying what that person was.
I know they had come to ARC and then I was told they pulled back, but again, it's.
Okay.
There's nothing active as far as that's concerned. I mean, it is a large piece of property, but there are challenges to it, which is obviously why it hasn't been developed already.
All right, so we have to.
I'll make the motion to grant the exemption for the posted weight limit to JCB on Leslie Roberts Drive pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon one ninety-one.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm a no. You're a no?
John, are you a no or a aye?
Okay, do we have any other O business? Thank you.
I do not.
Aye. Um, is there anyone here with public comment?
Yes, I apologize for not waiting to public comment session for the discussion on the town, the town of town name. I appreciate the discussion that you had on it. I think it was a good discussion and I think both sides of the, both sides of the, where the town employees, it's nice attendance, you're on the agenda. But today's a classic example of the people that volunteer their time for the town of Belmont, because there's a lot of people that got elected and they're not here right now because they can't, because they're at work. And I know a lot of I've said, yep, you can go to town hall and sign up age four any day, but a lot of people were age four. So I'm retired, I'm thinking maybe another person here is retired. Are you retired or not? No, okay. So my point was, so maybe next year, or maybe, maybe you could have a meeting if the people can't make it to come sign up. Maybe you could have your next meeting. Did you say if there's something, again, that people want?
They can talk to Alicia.
Compromise, I guess is the word I'm looking for. So same thing, if there was an important, uh, agenda that, let's say a lot of people are interested in, are you open to the fact that if they requested to be on the agenda, you would have a meeting if it didn't involve town heads? Maybe only one of them? Would you be willing to have a meeting at six o'clock if that was the case?
Yeah.
Something important, I guess, maybe a big money problem. I'm not gonna say anything specific, but are you open to that? All right, thank you.
Um, any other public? So is this taxpayer or employee?
Um, well, I guess it'll probably cross both lines.
Okay.
So as we all know, that, um, Election Day served on us something the town has never ever seen before, ever. It's put every department head here in a position to not know where to go or what to do. We can go through, I'll talk as an employee and say, and I'm, and I'm not a good example of this. I've given up wage increases over and over to get other budget or union contracts passed in the past. Um, but I will ask the board before you adjourn to give us some direction on how you want a prioritization. Travis said, well, perhaps we need to really focus on employees and, you know, and a lack of better words. Correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe management needs to kind of step aside. I will tell you, as we try to do all of this and you look at all the new employees that we have in the town of Belmont, there's only a few of us left that you can exempt. If you look at the new ones and where their wages were and what you guys tried to do last year to at least bring them somewhat at comparable wages, all employees across the board. If you decide that you are going to just focus on only employees, it's my thought process, maybe I'm off to lunch, and I don't think so, that you're gonna have an asset set. That individuals who are holding the responsibility of upper management have to manage all those people that unfortunately, um, had contracts that passed or didn't pass. And those management positions, and I could turn around and stop pointing fingers, are all new employees. Why do they wanna stay here if? And I think that you need to look at, and this was just me, um, of boots on the ground and who you have for employee and what the cost is, is if you don't equalize this across the board. I also think that obviously you're gonna have to dig really deep, we've already talked about it, I don't wanna be a dead horse, that, yep, we're gonna go without, but you have people managing departments and boots on the ground, working their fannies off, um, at a different level, because let's face it, um, it's very, very difficult to find people as we already seen. I mean, every one of our departments have turned over. I just got the town clerk, brand new, every person in there is new. Planning department, every person in there is new. Sorry, Alicia, she's not, I mean, she was a town employee, but even in the position she's in. Public works, I don't know how many individuals he's turned over because of wages or retirement or whatever. Who did that legal? Fight department, new. Um, new chief, new deputy chief, new, you know, the, it's, it's craziness. And yeah, we have a responsibility to the town, but I think that when you start sending a message, and I'm not saying you did, and we're gonna need to know where you stand, that people are all equal and that they need to work harder than they have now. Because when they get solidified, if they will, where they are, the compromises of trying to work without some of the things they really need to function with is gonna be astronomical. It's, it's gonna be extremely challenging as well, so. And, and that's where you'll see your dedicated individuals, if they're not prepared to give up some of the lesser items to support, um, all positions, then, um, you know, and I've said, but I'm gonna ask the board to give, because we have a, you know, we're gonna start ripping, I mean, we've already started ripping budgets apart and figuring what can you give up? If you can't give up, you know, so on and so forth. And at this point, just because a fight department or a highway department budget passed, um, the union, the, the, the extra piece there, it doesn't make them any difference than the police department not passing. I mean, everyone's equal across the board. And with the default budget, we all learned that monies, it's like now a big pool. It wouldn't be that way if the budget passed, but with the default budget, it's treated much differently. And so with that said, I think I wouldn't want to sit in any of your seats. It's the worst job anybody could ever have. This is gonna be the worst job, worst the town of Belmont has ever experienced. Um, and this is gonna be cuts, it's gonna make people not happy when you leave your new people in places. And if you stop making concessions in those areas, it's not bad enough of what's happened, but I think it's gonna be much worse. And this has nothing to do with me personally, for the record.
Thank you. This is depressing.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, does anyone else have any comments? Um, I guess we need to schedule a work session, um, at some point, if you can send out a couple of different ideas, all right? Um, our next meeting is scheduled for April third, um, here. Um, do we have a non-public?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So no other questions? All right. We have to move to non-public Dean ninety-one dash A colon three, col- colon three, Roman numeral two, letter.
I'm here to try the bathroom.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, all those. Travis is here. Ruth Rooney?
Ruth Rooney, Pam?
Sharon Champy? Um, so we'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn our public.